I'd like to call to order the Thursday, September 22 meeting of the Board of Education in Fairfield. Present is Mrs. Gerber, myself Philip Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Max and Cannelly. We have a couple of board members who we anticipate coming here after they make an appropriate appearance at their child's open house, so we do expect others to join us. If I could ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. We are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we officially get into the agenda, let me just make two comments. First, we are pleased to have Dr. Toni Jones, our future superintendent, is in this weekend saying hello to staff and the community and going house hunting. And so she timed it so that she could come and listen specifically to the student assessment report. So, Dr. Jones, thank you for joining us at this meeting. She is on a listening tour. I asked her if she wanted to come up and participate with us, and she said, "No, I'm here to listen." And then I said, "Well, that's actually true. We do only have one superintendent at a time." And Steve Tracy is our superintendent. Second, I'll ask unanimous consent of the board to give me the freedom to move items around. I think those board members who will be joining us will probably want to be here for the assessment discussion, so there may be some other items that we can go through and fairly quickly get out of the way. So if there's any objection to that, hearing none, so ordered. Onto business items. A, public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the board on items that are on our agenda? Please state your name and address.
Suzanne Meska, 123 Ry Gate Road. I first want to thank you for last evening's meet and greet. I thought that was very nice of you to offer it to the community and the parents, give us an opportunity to meet the new superintendent. I also want to thank the board on a whole for making a unanimous decision on the selection of superintendent. It bodes well for the future of where we're kind of going as a district that you all could find consensus in, in this big selection. Turning to the state assessment and advanced placement exam part of tonight, I have to say, while I appreciate the volume of data that the district was providing to parents, what's missing, in my opinion, is that we're not getting the follow-up once the analysis is being done. Last year, we had the first instance. The paperwork pretty much read the same as what we got this year. There was a discussion about a variance between Ward and Ludlow on the S-Bac math piece to be reviewed and discussed at a later meeting, and unfortunately, that never took place. I appreciate the effort that the school district is doing. I appreciate the effort that our principals are doing at their school levels to provide, you know, what their game plan is at each level in order to meet the needs of our students. And I also appreciate that we don't have a homogeneous student population. Everyone learns in different ways. But we need to have a communication from the top, from the district. What are you finding? What are you instructing principals to be doing? How are we coordinating this effort so that if one school has a good idea, how are we getting it to other schools? That's what's missing in this report. You know, I have to admit, I'm concerned. Fifty-three percent proficiency in math is concerning, unless you're going to tell me tonight, and I hope I'm going to hear it, that fifty-three percent on the S-Bac is equivalent to eighty-three percent on the CMT. My concern is it isn't. And my concern is, we're not getting enough information as parents from the upper body. What is it that we, as parents, can contribute to this process? I appreciate that this is tough. I appreciate Common Core has been difficult, but I expect to see a little bit more. I expect that if we're going to be told as parents that it will be readdressed at a later time on an agenda, that it is so done. So I hope that I'm going to hear some exciting words tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that wish to address the Board of Ed on a particular topic, please come forward and state your name and address.
Hi, good evening. Jill Vergara, 271 Old Post Road. I'm also on the RTM. I'm a representative for District Seven. I came to talk about the year-end financials, most specifically the shortfall in the health insurance that was mentioned in Dorian Munsell's report. I wanted to take this opportunity to highlight that during the budget process, I deeply disagreed with the Board of Selectmen's reduction of $800,000 from the health insurance fund. And I'm grateful and thankful that the Board of Finance added $250,000 back in, but I don't think that that was enough. And I think it was very irresponsible to put a shortfall, knowingly have a shortfall in our budget. And I'm hoping that people are aware of this, know that we, all of the town bodies, were aware of the shortfall, in the context of knowing that we are facing an even more difficult budget season for next year. I believe that Dr. Title said that he anticipated at least a 3.5% increase in our Board of Education budget for next year. So, on top of that, and on top of having a new superintendent and putting this on her lap, it's imprudent, and I wanted to highlight it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and speak on a particular topic and address the Board of Education? Okay, thank you very much. Because, as you heard, because the assessments might have an interest with other board members who are coming a little bit late, why don't we move directly on to 3C, financial review, fiscal year? Do you wish to make any comments before Mrs. Munsell comes up?
Only to express my appreciation, and we've spent some time over the last few days her acquainting me with these numbers. And with that, I'll turn it over to--
Okay, Ms. Munsell.
Okay, I'm going to start with the, I think everything was in closure, too, but I'm going to start with the financial report. And first with the budget transfer sheet. So, this is a sheet that you've seen before. The first two columns you saw back in June, they were our projected balance at the, our June 30 projected balance at that time, which was June 16, and the transfers that the board approved at that time. As of the last, as of June 30th, that's our, because that's the end of the fiscal year, it's the final date that costs can be incurred. Column three shows the actual balances at that point in time on June 30. We estimated at that time that we needed a reserve of about $60,000 because there are still costs incurred on June 30, before June 30, that are not yet paid or encumbered. So, they're paid after that point in time, so we needed that reserve. So, you'll see that the total of that column is approximately $60,000. However, we had, on that date, a balance of about $160,000. So, we were able to put an additional $100,000 into the medical retention fund, which you see in column three circled in red. And throughout the month of July, we go on paying our invoices that we receive on cost incurred. We liquidate encumbrances and make those adjustments based on actual invoices and close officially on July 31st. So, column four is, was our balance at the end of July. July 31st, we had a balance of the 72,397, which we were able to transfer into Medical Retention Fund. So, a total of 172,397 went into medical retention at the end of the year. The column five were the end-of-year closings that we had to do to true up our major classifications and ended the fiscal year with a final balance of .36.
And that .36 was transferred to the general fund?
Went back to the town.
Right. I can never get my checkbook that close.
Now, these are considered final for the year. They were reported on the ED001, which is due September 1st. They will be audited by the auditors this fall and finalized before December 31st.
So, do you, before we move on to the next, do you want to entertain questions on this?
Yeah, take questions.
Okay. Do board members have questions on the sheet that has blue columns in it, budget transfers and final balances at July 31, 2016? So, we had estimated there would be having some excess in the medical retention fund based on projections. This was adding $173,000 to it, but I am sure that projections don't always come true once you actually get the claims in there as well. So, no questions, we'll move on?
Okay. That's this very colorful, but very complicated history of medical retention. The spreadsheet shows everything from the superintendent and Board of Ed's requested budget, health insurance budget, back with November experience, which are claims three and four, all the way through the dark, deep blue columns at the end, which are the final result of the year. So, I'm going to focus on those final four columns, 16, 17, 18, and 19. Column 16 is the final revenue and expenses with June claims. All these figures are actual, and they tie to the general ledger, which we never did before because we never had, we've never reported claims all the way up through June. We usually stop in April because the budget was passed, but this is a very unique year regarding medical retention. The only, the item that isn't necessarily actual in that column is the IBNR. However, that was calculated by Aon. They were able to give it, give us their actuarial calculation a little earlier than normal. So, the IBNR that's included in there was calculated by them as opposed to being estimated by us. So, that left us with a cash balance at the, on June 30, 16, with, of $3.038 million in the medical retention fund. Now, because this is such a unique year, because the self-insurance plan is phased out, no longer in existence, I did something different with the 16, 17 information. I broke it out into column 17 and 18. Column 17 is the closeout of the self-insurance plan, so it's everything associated with the claims, the IBNR, the revenue that we anticipate. There's rebate revenue due to us on the 15, 16 prescription claims. And then, of course, we start out with the beginning balance from, the ending balance from June 30 becomes our beginning balance, the $3,038.
Which is reflected in column 17.
Correct.
Is that correct? Yeah, thank you.
Column 18 are all the 16, 17 expenses associated, and revenue associated with the Connecticut Partnership Plan. So, you'll see it shows the 20 million, here, 20 million, it's getting too small, 846 that we had requested in the budget, the budget adjustments, which left us with an appropriated budget of the 19, 316. Then we have now updated our other revenue or contributions from other sources. And we did, we did see a decline there. When we, when we had all our employee and retiree meetings regarding Connecticut Partnership, we took the opportunity to educate the retirees on their opportunities. Certified teachers and administrators have an opportunity to go to a different plan, and a lot of retirees took that option. So, our revenue has dropped a little bit there with retirees. Then we go down to, in the pink, the estimated cost, leaving us with that shortfall that was just mentioned of 740. Now, back in April, Dr. Title had sent a, an email and an attached spreadsheet to the Board of Ed and town bodies, showing at that point in time, based on what had happened to our budget, the 1.3, 1.53 in cuts, and our estimated expenses at the time, that we knew that there was a shortfall, that we were going to need money from the medical retention fund. At that point in time, it was a little over a million dollars. But now that we have, at that time, we didn't have our final rates, and we didn't have, you know, more current, we hadn't updated our head count since the beginning of the year. So, based on the revised revenue and the actual rates, that million-dollar shortfall has now become 740. Column 19 is a total of, column 19 and column 18 together are what totals, what the totals that shows in column 17. And I will, I'll also add that that same email and spreadsheet that Dr. Title sent reiterated, as he did many times, what that gap in our, in our current budget means for our 17, 18 budget and that cliff that he talked about. So, I just might as well mention that while we're here, talking about this right now.
Mr. Chairman, I would just add one thing, which is that Ms. Munsell and I did have the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to review these same numbers with Mr. Mayor on the town side, so that they've seen the same information, they see where we're heading. And thank you for being so precise and careful with putting this very complicated picture together.
Any questions from board members on this? Mrs. Max and Cannelly.
Just a few. Line with the retirees, I was hoping you could, I lost my place on that in terms of between column 16 and 17. What was the number that represented the retirees opting for that different option and thus reducing our revenue? Because the two numbers I'm looking at, I have to believe I'm in the wrong place.
Under, under the other income, it's about midway through the page, midway down on the You look all the way to the left, it says retiree payment in that second box.
That's labeled final budget.
Gotcha.
We had, and if you look in column four, we had $1,358, okay? We carry that across because we don't update that throughout the year when we're, you know, we update the projections and everything, but we don't, we couldn't possibly keep up with the changes in, and who's taking, and who's changed insurance. But in column 13, you'll see that line changed to $1,999, $1,999.
Gotcha.
So, there was a drop there of about, almost $260,000.
Well, I was definitely looking in the wrong column because I was looking at one that involved millions, so I knew that was wrong. And then I was also wondering if you could--
If I can.
Sure.
And so, the $260,000 approximate number represents the amount of revenue that was lost because retirees chose a different option?
Right.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay. And then, I was hoping you could, because I think that it's going to come up again, so I think the more we re-educate about it, the better, and that includes for us. I was hoping you could point to the number, I mean, where the, explain the cliff again, that how do these numbers, in what way are we going to be hearing about this again in January?
How the 742 came about, or this shortfall of 740?
Right.
Okay. The, our budget was cut $1,530, so that was a loss in revenue. Those changes that we just talked about, that other, that group of other income, that changed, that went down 392,000. We had a drop in grants also. So, that was a total reduction in revenue of $1,922. If you go down to the expense box, where the number's in red, if you look in column four, it's all the difference between what we had proposed in that, which is column four versus column 18. So, our expenses at that time, if you take the 26, 720, $1,397, and then we had put in $500,000 as a reserve in case there was, you know, a problem with our claims. So, the total expenses were 28, 618. If you go to column 18, that $500,000 went away, that was taken away. And our expenses were adjusted based on the new rates and the updated head counts. That, I don't have that total there, but it's 27, 4. So, cost went down by $1,180. So, the difference between the drop in revenue and the improvement in expenses is the 742.
And so, does that mean that to get back to just even, we have to find 700, I'll call it $50,000 to get back to even, not counting what premium cost increases may be for the following year? That's the cliff, the $750,000 is currently what we, before it was considered to be higher, it's come down to 750, but it's still a cliff?
Right.
Have I stated that right?
Yes.
Okay.
At that time, when I did the spreadsheet and it went out in April, that, the line item, the health insurance line item would have, based on a, the expenses at that time, which were that column four, and a, anticipated 5% increase, the increase in that line item would have been 11%. Based on more current information, that increase would be more like 9% for that one line item.
Thank you. Were you in the middle of other questions? No? Any other questions from board members on the medical retention fund? Under normal circumstances, December is a time for us to deal with health insurance and pension. We're assuming that that will be a, less of a meeting because we won't have the Aon people here and projections and all the rest, and co-insurance questions. However, we probably will still need to have some time, because when you say all the final bills are in, do we, do we say there are no other expenses we're expecting to come in, and dribs and drabs, or we're done?
For, for last year?
Yes.
For, no, we, we've paid about $1.2 million, but that IBNR is 1.7, so it, there's going to be a small amount that'll go on for, hopefully, a short period of time.
Okay, so it'll change marginally, but not in big chunks, we hope.
It shouldn't, right.
Okay. Any other questions? What's the next schedule you'd like to go over?
For me?
That's it, okay.
Unless you have questions on, on some other stuff that went on.
On the line items of the actual report.
Yeah.
Any other questions from board members on anything related to the year-end fiscal report? No? Okay, thank you very much. 3D, approval of policies, I think, perhaps the chair of the policy committee wishes to lead us through that section?
Can we make the motion first?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yes. I was, let me put it on the floor first. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve policies 3516, 3524.1, and 4115/4215. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Max and Cannelly, followed by, seconded by Mr. Calabrese.
In speaking of this, I did receive a few questions, which were addressed. I don't know if anybody in the last few hours have any additional questions, but again, this is all part of that audit. These were a couple of policies that we really went through several drafts of, actually, both with staff and taking a look at statute and even referencing back to CAAB with some of our questions, but otherwise, I believe these are pretty self-explanatory, albeit perhaps not exciting. But if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board on these three policies that are in front of us that were, had a first reading at the last meeting, and so you had copies at the last meeting? No questions? Out to the public, this is a voting item, so any member of the public that wishes to address either policy 3516, 3524.1, or policy 4115/4215, please come forward at this time, state your name and address. I guess you're right, they're not all that exciting. Is the board ready to act?
Yes.
All in favor of the motion that the Board of Education approve policies 3516, 3524.1, and 4115/4215, raise your hand. It is unanimous, thank you very much. So, we then have some policies for deletion. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the deletion of policies 3120 and 3120.2. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mrs. Gerber, seconds. Do you want to make any comments about these?
Sure. Just a reminder that the content of these had been incorporated in something that we approved back in June, so these are now simply, it's simply completely redundant language, thus looking to delete.
Any questions from the board? This is a voting item, so out to the public for another set of very interesting policies. Any member of the public wish to come forward and make a comment on these? Any member of the public wish to come forward and make a comment on these? Seeing none, back to the board. With no further debate, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the deletion of policies thirty-one twenty and thirty-one twenty point two. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's, I'll say unanimous, Mrs. Lou McCormick joined us, but not for the discussion, so so the vote is? Six oh. So now we have a first reading of a policy, Mrs. Maxine Cunnelly?
So once again, getting this up to speed, this is regarding personal leaves from staff members. Once again, the number, I think I've referenced this before, but in case anyone doesn't remember, that that number in the upper right corner, the forty-one fifty-two and forty-two fifty-two is, because of the reference to both certified and non-certified, that the language of the policy covers both sets of employees. And so if anyone has an immediate question, happy to answer it, and if not immediate, emailed at any point before the next meeting would be appreciated.
Any questions from the board members at the moment? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item three G, approval of the minutes. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September sixth, two thousand and sixteen. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, do I have a second? Ms. Pitco, any discussion by the board on the minutes? Seeing none, ready to act, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September sixth, two thousand and sixteen. In favor, please raise your hand. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxine Cunnelly, opposed? Abstained?
I was out.
Ms. Carnell was out, and that's an abstention. Right. Thank you very much. Would you like to do the superintendent's report, and then we'll go on to the assessments?
I would love to do the superintendent's report.
Fair enough, that's what we will do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Four items I'd like to speak with you about this evening. First, some very nice news. Three of our students at the Fairfield Ludlow High School were named national merit semifinalists recently, reflecting very strong performance on last year's preliminary SAT. And I just want to mention those names and congratulate these young people and their teachers and their parents on guiding them for this accomplishment. Adriana Bay, Paul John, and Emily Ji were all awarded this semifinalist status, and so we wish them well, and we congratulate everybody who helped them to get there. Second, the town has come forward to request the board at its next meeting, consider the approval for the installation of electric vehicle charging stations, two each, at each of the two high schools. This will come back to you for action on October the fourth, and at that time, Scott Thompson, who chairs the Fairfield Clean Energy Task Force, will be here along with Mr. Cullen to discuss the details. The installation of this equipment will be done under a grant from the Connecticut Department of Environment and Environmental Protection. The cost to the school district would be limited to an annual fee to the electric company of less than seven hundred dollars. So I just want to give you a heads up that this is heading your way, and we'll talk about it next time.
If I can. Under normal circumstances, on major items, we normally present at one meeting and vote at the next. I assume that there's some time issue that they want to move this along. Are any board members, I'll put it on as an action item, and if any board members on the fourth feel that there's questions that they want to delay to another meeting, you'd be welcome to, but I'm anticipating to put it on as an action item. Any, I see no objections to that, so yes, we'll put it on for ten-four as an action item.
Is there any time pressure on this, or that would be fine if we needed to? That'd be fine, good, okay. Number three, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Cullen, and I had the pleasure in this room earlier this week to present the district's ten-year capital plan to the Board of Finance, and had what I thought was a productive discussion, some questions, and I think a general, good understanding on the part of the Board of Finance of the facilities and capital efforts that you all discussed about a month ago, that carries us out through the year twenty-five, twenty-six. So that has been done. And finally, several of you have asked me about the recent court decision that came down in the case of the Connecticut Coalition for Justice and Education Funding versus REL, and I thought I would just take a couple of minutes to summarize. It's a very lengthy decision, it's very controversial, but here are some of the highlights. To begin with, the Connecticut Constitution, Article eight, provides that there shall always be free public education, elementary and secondary schools in the state, and that the General Assembly shall implement this principle by appropriate legislation. And on those two sentences hang an awful lot of education law in this state. As a result of that sentence or two, elementary and secondary education in Connecticut are regarded as a fundamental right, and in delegating that obligation to local school systems, the state does not relieve itself of its obligation to see to it that the constitutional right is upheld. The court, in its recent ruling just earlier this month, concluded that the state's current funding system, educator evaluation system, special ed system, and elementary and secondary education standards are, quote, "unconstitutionally irrational." And just to briefly comment on each of those elements, I think the case has been seen largely as a school funding case, but the judge got into several other areas. But to begin with funding, the court found that the level of funding provided by the state to our schools is up to the legislature. And in fact, they found that the aggregate level of funding currently in place in the state meets constitutional requirements. But, says the court, "The system must be rational, based on, quote, 'an honest formula that delivers state aid according to local need.' Current state funding arrangements," said the court, "do not meet this test." And the judge went further to say, quote, "By beyond a reasonable doubt, Connecticut has no rational, substantial, verifiable plan to distribute money for education aid and school construction," unquote. The, by ignoring the ECS formula, that's the Education Cost Sharing Formula, has been in place in the state for decades, and by distributing aid such that poorer and needier districts are losing funding while wealthier, higher-performing districts are receiving increased funding. This was the discussion around the term, the use of the term irrational. The judge ordered the state to draft a plan by March seventh of two thousand and seventeen on a new spending plan and a funding formula that rationally and substantially connects education spending with education need. So that's where that stood. As to education standards, the judge required also by March of two thousand and seventeen that the state must set meaningful standards of achievement for the award of a high school diploma. The court found that, quote, "patronizing and illusory degrees," unquote, unrelated to achievement, are being awarded in some cases. And second, the judge required the state to submit a process by which elementary students would demonstrate basic literacy and numeracy skills before matriculating to secondary school. On the issue of educator pay and evaluation, the court found that the state was using an irrational system of evaluation and compensation for education professionals not linked to its value in teaching children. The court directed again by March two thousand and seventeen, it's going to be a very busy month at the State Education Department, that the state must submit plans for, quote, "a rational," unquote, "system for evaluating and compensating education professionals, including proposals for hiring, evaluating, promoting, removing, and paying such education professionals." Finally, the judge turned his attention to special education. He stated in his decision that the identification of students for special ed services is, quote, "mostly irrational, mostly arbitrary." Special ed spending, he said, was crowding out spending on general education programs. He also raised the objection to spending money on children who cannot reasonably be expected to benefit from special education. And it has been widely speculating that that element of the ruling conflicts straight up with federal law that's been on the books for, back to the nineteen seventies, but nevertheless, it's in there. Again, by March of two thousand and seventeen, the state must submit new standards which rationally and substantially link special ed spending with elementary and secondary education, which will address funding, identification, and educational services standards for education. Now, earlier this week, Attorney General Jebson filed an appeal, and he found in his appeal that the trial judge embarked on an uncharted and legally unsupported path. The Supreme Court has certified his appeal, that means he's being, given permission to come forward. No timeline was set by the court to receive this appeal, but in the meantime, the Supreme Court did issue a stay of the order. So all that stuff that I said about March seventeen, that clock is not ticking. That's where we stand, and this is about the fourth time around, in my memory, in Connecticut where this issue has gotten to the court and then tossed back to the General Assembly. So it bears watching, and it touches on many critical elements of our relationship as a school district to the state. That is my report, Mr. Chairman. That's it for me.
And as usual, if board members wish to comment or nor ask questions on any subject that the superintendent raised, including the court decision, feel free to do so. Any comments which people wish to make on any subject? I was polite in the New York Times, but I do believe irrational, in some respects, can be applied to the opinion. Okay, so instead of going to committee liaison reports, I think the time has come that we need to go back up to three B, the review of state assessments and advanced placement exams, so do you have any opening comments, or?
Only to invite Dr. Boyce and Mr. Cummings to come forward, and to thank them in advance for pulling together a myriad of data into a comprehensive format for us tonight, so with that, I think they have a few remarks, and then we'll take your questions.
Thank you.
I just want to speak for a minute about the format. You, at your, when you sat down at your place, you saw two tables that had been updated, tables one and table two. You may have noticed when you received the packet last Friday, there were some blanks in table one and table two as we sent them to you, because the state had not yet released the state percent by level. They just released that last Monday. And so we've added that information to tables one and tables two for the SBAK. They have not yet released the state, the percentage for the state by level for the CMT or CAPT. When we have that, we'll send it to you, and this, of course, will be posted on the website as well. So I just wanted, in case you were wondering. We received the SBAK scores about four weeks ago, and the CMT and CAPT about two weeks after that. And there's a lot of information to look at, a lot of different ways to look at the data, and Mr. Cummings and I have started looking at it very carefully and having conversations with the principals about what we're seeing, but in that time, in the last four weeks, we've also opened school, and so until we've got school open and running, the school data teams and the school improvement teams, which is where the real work in diving into this data happens, haven't had the opportunity to do so yet, but they will be starting on that very soon. They spend a great deal of time looking at this, and looking at it in conjunction with other data points as well, and really looking at it by disaggregating, and by looking at everything down to the student level, and that takes a lot of time, it's an important effort, and it's one that we're just, have just started to get into. This, we also did receive this week the parent reports, the paper parent reports, and those will be mailed out the week of October tenth. The schools are getting those and preparing the envelopes, and so they'll be in the mail sometime that week. The report, as you have it, as you noticed, just as an overview, that has, the first three tables are district level data, and then we've given you data by school, elementary and middle. And then at the back, we have high school-related data, data by high school, and then the AP results, which we repeated, we'd given that to you, I'd given that to you a few weeks ago. So that is the way we have formulated it, and I'd like to ask Mr. Cummings if you'd like to make a few comments about what we've noticed so far.
Good evening, Mike Cummings, Director of Elementary Education. I would like to comment a couple of the things that we've begun to notice, and the work, as Dr. Boyce mentioned, the work that has to continue throughout the school year. As I, we mentioned in our cover memo, one of the things that is of interest to us is now the ability, given that this is the second year of the SBA, to begin to look at cohort performance over time. The second iteration of the test, we can begin to track students, those students anyway, who've been in grades three now through four and continue in ensuing years as they take the SBA. This gives us a better handle on performance over time, and allows us to develop some measures against our current curriculum and instructional expectations. The other piece that we are going to be able to do this year, that we've not been able to do so much in the past, is start to look at some of the formative assessment data we have, for instance, the STAR data, and start to look at that more closely to see how that aligns to SBA performance. One of the struggles with the SBA performance, the data, excuse me, is that unlike the past CMT data, the SBA data is not as full of, it's not as disaggregated by the state, it doesn't have the strands that you were used to if you've been following the CMT for a long time. It doesn't have that strand performance level approach that really helps us take those numbers apart. And that's a struggle with the SBA, so we have to, to some degree, as Dr. Boyce said, do that analysis and try to pull, we have to work harder at making the connections, for example. But that's the work we're engaged in, is the schools, school improvement teams are looking at the data, they'll be setting indicators of progress, which we'll be talking about in the coming months when we talk about the district improvement plan. And then this work will continue during the course of the year.
I did want to just, excuse me.
No, please.
I wanted to just briefly acknowledge Ms. Miska's point from earlier in the evening, and simply to say that after our teachers and principals have had a chance to digest this information in greater detail, we will have some conversations about how and when they could come back with some additional information, what do we think all this means, how does it fit or not fit with other indicators of performance that are available to us, and what steps should we take as a part of an effort at continuous improvement based on everything we know? So the work will continue, but you make a good point, that other folks who've been following this, I'm sure would like to hear what those conclusions are later in the year, so thank you for that.
Ready for questions? Questions or comments from board members? Ms. Pitco?
I know it's the beginning of school year, I'm wondering if you've had a chance to look at like disaggregated information, free and reduced lunch, maybe boys versus girls and some of this data?
No, we've not been able to do that yet. One of the things that we're doing as we begin the year is, the state, interestingly, does not provide a breakout of the free and reduce, and that's really important, as you know, to our district improvement plan, so we have to work that, do that connections alone here through infinite campus. We just haven't had time to, one, get that, I believe the data is uploaded, but we've not had yet time to pull it apart and develop the visualizations that will help with that. But we have to spend time on that to do that work.
Do you think it'll be ready before the teachers create their student learning objectives?
That work, the disaggregation?
Yes.
That is our hope, and certainly we are going to have to have it for you to report out of the district improvement plan.
Other questions? This is Lou McCormick?
So I guess my understanding after Dr. Tracy's comments is that we plan on coming back and revisiting this later in the year with the conclusions after you've had time to more deeply analyze the information, so I'm wondering, what time are we expecting that?
We really didn't talk about the timing, so I don't know. I think we'd need some more conversation to figure out how long that will take.
And so I guess we would expect it to occur in this year? Not this school year, but this calendar year?
I would think so. I mean, the idea is to take advantage of the information, so as soon as we can, but in fairness, I, these folks need time to get to the principals and the teachers.
But in fairness, these folks need time to get to the principals and the teachers, so as soon as we can have that conversation, if they have an estimated date, we'll come back with it.
Okay. I just, I do want to put some urgency because if we let stuff slip, we'll get into budget season, and then it'll be hard to slip it in, and then, before you know it, it's spring, and then another year has gone by. So, to the extent that we could slip it in before budget season, I think that would be helpful. And to Ms. Pitko's point, we can include some of that into kind of the teacher planning. And then, I have one more question. Shall I defer to other board members first?
If you have a second question, ask away.
I guess my second question, and I've had some conversation with Dr. Tracy on this already, but I'm hoping as you do your further analysis that you can include DRG comparative information in the analysis. The reason I am pointing this out, you know, we've mentioned this before, is that I appreciate the cohort comparison. I think that's valuable, looking at year over year. But also, I think what's valuable is taking a look at the absolute numbers and looking at our peers and saying, okay, are the absolute numbers as well, how are we performing, kind of year to year, as well as on a relative basis to our socioeconomic peers and DRGB? I think it would be good information to see how DRG A is doing as well, but most significantly in our own DRGB across the board. Are we making progress against others? Are others making more progress than us? And then, we ask why? What are we doing right in certain cases, and what could we be doing better? And that's kind of a district-wide exercise, and I think that would be very valuable in addition. I know that adds another kind of level to this, but I think that that would be valuable to the extent, in the next few weeks when you're working on it, you could consider that.
Other questions? Mrs. Maxon Connell.
Thank you. A few questions. First, I was wondering if, that when you're doing the data, are you usually using, these numbers, are you looking at raw scores or cut scores? And have those changed, I mean, in terms of the raw score improvement with a cohort or with a grade? If that's providing different information? And I was also curious, as we look at the improvement with a cohort or lack of improvement with a cohort, did any cut scores change from one grade to the next? And I don't know if you know that, and I apologize, that's definitely a question I should have sent you ahead of time.
I can't tell you if the cut scores have changed. I think one of the things that we're working on, or you raise a really good question about the scores we look at. Right now, we're reporting out to you, obviously, the percentages. The SBA is reported out, though, in a scale score, and unlike the CMT, it has that ability that the scale score translates across grades. So, but this is only the second iteration of the test. So, there's a learning curve that we have to engage in, in studying that data. I mean, obviously, we can tell by, if a child achieves, say, Level 3, that that's a good scale score, but the differences in the scale score and how they exactly relate to the demonstration of learning on the test, it's still something that we're not, I have to be honest, very clear on because the information has not come back very clearly on what this looks like. So, that's all part of the learning. I think that the, you know, what we want to do is ultimately move beyond, it's a summative assessment, you know, in a sense, but we also want to be able to use it as a formative assessment to say, okay, what, where are the holes in this child's learning, and how do we respond to it? And that, that ability to dissect the data is still ahead of us.
And I would just add that getting into this data is a very complex and time-consuming process. We never want to judge a child on one test or one data point. And so, we look at this, but then we look at, what do we see happening when we give the STAR reading or STAR math? What is the teacher seeing happening on classroom tests? It's really, in my mind, the real value of diving into this and taking the time to do it right is to be able to make instructional decisions that benefit the student. And so, to do that, we have to look at a variety of test results, of situations, of, you know, we have young children taking this test on a computer. You know, that alone may be something we have to think about. Did that have an impact on the result? So, the, you know, a combination of the quantitative data with the qualitative, you know, what do we see happening in the classroom, I think are very important aspects of a child's learning, and the teachers have to be able to make instructional decisions when they put all of that together in a picture and determine what's best for the student.
And to follow up on that, because one of the reasons I had been interested also in that raw score is, you know, always wondering, for example, at Level 2, that always especially draws my attention, is it low on Level 2 or high on Level 2? Are they right at the verge of moving over, and how does that look? And so, obviously, that, but that's for you. I'm not looking to see all the scores, but I was just curious if, you know, how easy it was to get all of that. And just to clarify, we get absolutely no strand information on any of these, and that includes the SAT and PSAT, which I had, unless I'm not remembering correctly, I had been positive that was something we'd asked about very specifically.
Yes, that, I think we answered that with, we were referring to the SBAK when Mr. Cummings answered that question. We get very detailed information on the PSAT and the SAT, including links to Khan Academy, suggestions for future, for further study for the students. That is very detailed. But when we look at this compared to what we used to get with the CMT, there's a big difference. I mean, I am amazed that even on the state does not disaggregate the data by free and reduced lunch for us, that we have to do that. And our IT department is very capable of doing it, but that used to be something we could pull right off of the CT Reports website, and we can't with this.
And so, then, one area of improvement I was wondering about, or progress or lack thereof, since this is, this class of juniors was the first to take this new test, what the information from October to March looked like? And is that something that the teachers will have access to in terms of, I was teaching them, this is what happened in both language arts and math?
Yes, absolutely. We're, Mr. Rasmussen, Dr. Rasmussen and Mr. Chappett are working with the teachers through the headmasters and housemasters to bring that data together. We've done an analysis of the PSAT and the SAT to look for a predictive quality between the two. But if you remember, when the students take the PSAT, we get a very detailed suggested areas to concentrate on. It's much better than we ever got with the CMT or CAPT. And it is the first time, it's hard the first time through an assessment, especially the new SAT, to really, there's nothing to compare it to, and, you know, we're making the best conclusions we can. But the teachers are, you know, at the high school, work together in their PLTs, and one of the things they have the opportunity to focus on is this data, which is certainly available to them.
And last question was, I realized, when you were talking about Khan Academy, I know that's coming to the students on an individual basis, but there is also at the school level that there, that teachers are getting that strand information, area of weakness as a, as an entire grade?
Yeah.
So, that they know the areas in the curriculum. I mean, again, I have to use the CMT language of, you know, estimation, et cetera, that so the teachers are getting that at the school level. I know that the Khan Academy is really good for the individual student.
Right. There's a, there's a document that links the areas in the PSE to the Khan Academy lesson. So, that's something that we certainly can pursue, but the teachers are also getting the data by students so they can make instructional decisions based on what they see for their students.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Pitko, did you want to follow up on a line of inquiry?
Yes. So, I, my, you touched on it real quick, and I wanted to come back to it. The testing, I know that the smarter balance is done on the computer. My question is towards the elementary school grades with all the elementary schools we have, outside of the progress monitoring that they're doing, how much testing are they actually doing on a formative or a summative assessment on the computer?
The, um...
It's practice. I mean, they need to be able to use the computer.
Right. As a, the only other formative assessment that we do in K-2, and K starts mid-year, is the STAR assessments in reading and math. Those are only, each of them, about 20, 25 minutes. They don't, you know, one of the questions always is raised, it's been raised since SBAK was a proposal, is the stamina issue for students who, while they may be able to go on Minecraft for hours, the SBA unfortunately just doesn't hold that same allure for, you know, half an hour to an hour of a test. So, that's a stamina issue that rests out there as an unanswered question, quite honestly, because I don't know if any of us want to gear, test, get them ready for that to the endurance piece alone, if that makes sense. So...
I only mention it as an eighth-grade teacher sitting through smarter balance. Even the eighth graders had hard times using the tools on the computer to actually take the smarter balance. So, an elementary school student to be able to do that? Just, I'm looking at like the third-grade data here. That's why I asked the question.
Back and forth and things like that, yes.
Yeah. I had one more question. So, as the teachers start to prepare their SLOs, their student learning objectives, and we're moving towards higher-order thinking, is the goals going to be more centered in moving students from like a Level 2 to a Level 3? Or are the IAGDs that they're going to create, 82% of all students will be proficient or goal? Where are we moving in getting their objectives?
Do you want to have a lifeline to our human resources director in the event that she may have a comment on that?
She's always welcome to join us if she'd like to add. I'll start, and she can think if I need to add more. The teachers are in the process of writing their goals, as I'm sure you know. And remember, we don't get this data back until August, so they can't base any of that on the SBAK because they don't have the results. But we always encourage teachers, the goal is, 100% of my students are going to improve. Now, whether they're going from Level 2 to 3 or Level 1, whatever the movement is, but we, I've never been in favor of saying only 80% are to reach goal. Everybody's going to improve. We're going to move all of them up. And so, they, but they have to base it on assessments that they have access to before the school year ends so they can finish out the evaluation.
Ann Lefort, Director of Human Resources, a quick comment on their IAGDs and their plan. State test data is not being used again this year in teacher evaluation plans. So, they'll use whatever assessments they have. They are required to use a standardized assessment if there is one that exists, but state test data is exempt from a teacher evaluation plan. It has been through this whole process with the new federal regulations that came out. It's again on hold for this year. Okay?
Thank you. Other questions from board members? Ms. Carnell?
Through the chair, I guess we'll start with the lower grades. I'm just curious about the numbers. If you look at these charts, you can pick any subject, I don't really care. First one we could do is English Language, Grade 3. It says the number tested is 853, if I'm reading this correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. So, is it 853 out of what? Because if I do my addition, I'm sorry, what? That's what I was asking. I said the number. Okay, it's a percentage, not the number.
Right. The 853 is the number that were tested in third grade in 2015, and the 722, for example, is the number tested in third grade in 2016.
What it, right.
12 is a percentage. Everything else is a percentage.
Okay, that's, well, okay, it wasn't clear. That's why I was asking. Whoever did this, they need to use their percentage. So, why such a drastic difference of over 131 kids between 15 and 16?
Well, I think, the only thing I could say is there were more, there was more procreation nine years previous.
Figure out what was going on nine years ago. I think the economy was crashing, so...
That's my crunching the data for you.
Yeah. But essentially, the numbers relate to the numbers of students in that grade at that given year.
But that's drastic. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, it is. If you look at...
Only you have that. Those hidden numbers.
For example, if you look at 2016, in fourth grade, that number went up, you know, 853 to 860. So, seven more children joined that group. But that's, if you look at, the best thing, best reference, which I don't have in front of me right now, would be the budget book with the October 1 enrollment. You can see that kind of rise and fall across the grades.
Right. No, because there is some really drastic differences. So, you're saying out of 853 tested, then 12% versus 23% of the state on any, just following that, those stats?
Correct.
Okay. I do have another question, but I've got to recalibrate.
Any other questions from board members? Any other questions from board members? Do you have, Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I know you said you needed more time to analyze this, but I'm just wondering, after having just taken this preliminary examination of the numbers that have been presented, are there some kind of big-picture takeaways that you think should be highlighted in terms of things that the district has done well, or particular strengths that have been demonstrated in the district in different places? And then, similarly, on the counter side, are there some things that stick out that we have to question and say, you know what? These are areas that we need to look in deeper, that maybe we should be doing better here, and not quite sure why the data looks that way?
You highlighted some items on the September 15 memo, but is there anything beyond that memo that you wish to...
I would only say, in addition to the items mentioned on the memo, one of the things that we notice, you know, in just preliminary discussions, is that where we are able to dedicate resources, and primary among those resources being time, and where we are able to get, to support that time, where are we able to get the building leadership teams, the LASs, the MSTs, and certainly the building principal to dedicate their time, which is the challenge because of so much going on at the elementary school, falling on those folks' shoulders. When we're able to do that, we can see the results. It's not surprising, really, that, you know, if you can, whenever you have an issue or a topic, if you can dedicate time and effort to it, it will result in positive changes. The struggle is always is the ability to manage the level of change at once and in different settings, and given all the different factors that happen across the grade level, every grade level in every building. So, that's really the challenge of the work. And so, how do we, you know, you raised this point earlier in your comments, how do we replicate success? So, we're looking to look backward from where, what those numbers indicate, and as Dr. Boyce said, not just these numbers, but other numbers, corollary numbers, and say, okay, these are patches where things are going really well, what's happening there, and how do we build upon it?
And, oh, do you want to go first? Sure.
And I certainly agree with that, and I would add a few things. One is, we know that the person that has the greatest impact on student learning is a teacher in the classroom. And I think one of the best things that has happened here in the last few years is when we revised our teacher evaluation plan and we based it on the work of Marzano, because we now have a framework for talking about instruction. It's a research-based framework, and the administrators who work with teachers and evaluate them can have really good, solid, specific conversations about strategies that work in the classroom based on the needs of their students, and the needs of their students come from an evaluation of the data. So, we have to, we will, of course, continue our focus on supporting teachers as they work with students. The second thing is, in the middle schools, I was very happy, in fact, I sent Mr. Formato a note because the science scores for eighth grade in Tomlinson took a significant rise, and I was really very pleased for the teachers and the staff at that school who caused that to happen. But the other thing about the middle schools is we've always, speaking about resources, as Mr. Cummings just did, we've always provided the middle schools with the same resources, regardless of which school they are. Everyone has one LAS, everyone has one MRT. And I think looking at this data makes me ask the question, do we have to take a closer look at that? And perhaps, Tomlinson, for example, if you recall, you provided staffing for an additional reading teacher there this year. Do we have to take another look at that and perhaps provide additional staffing for math support? We do this in the elementaries, but we've never really done it in the middle, and I think we need to take a much closer look at that as well.
Thank you. You have one more question?
No, it's on the same topic. Just as a follow-on to that, you know, when I was looking at this, I'm wondering, as you go through this analysis, it does, it does kind of pop out as you're going through the numbers in more detail how certain schools are like, wow, how could they be so much higher in, say, science than everyone else? What are they doing that could be different? Because for such a difference, and, you know, the socioeconomic is different, but sometimes it's not so different that it explains the phenomenon, or certain schools are so amazing in ELA, like, how did they accomplish such a difference than the other ones? On the... a difference than the other ones? On the reverse side, you know, how could one school have 44% of the kids at level one and two in math? Like, how can that be? You think, oh, maybe it's socioeconomic explanations, until you look deeper, and you're like, you know, that's not it. So, when you go through the analysis, I think it would be great, and I don't know if it's possible, but maybe to share some of these ideas or best practices from these very successful schools, and also share with us, you know, these are the places that have deficits without names, and say, this is, these are some strategies that we think we might apply. I just think that would be great for the community to hear the types of ideas that are within our community that are successful, and understand that we do have pockets that we need to improve, and we plan on applying our strategies for success towards them.
Thank you. Ms. Carnell, are you ready with your question?
I figured it out. It was bothering me, the percentages. So, I'm going to take a leap of faith, and we're going to hope the math curriculum leader doesn't hear this. But according to what you were saying, percentages, and then each school, that column should add to 100, level one, level two, level three, level four. Correct? Each school down should add to 100?
And could I, what table are you referencing?
Oh, we can pick page 18.
Well, pick the one that you're looking at.
Okay. Page, okay. You want me to pick page 19 at McKinley?
Fair enough.
Okay. So, on the math. So, if I'm following you, Grade Three, 2015, if we go down the school, those five numbers should add up to 100? Okay, let's three and four. They don't. That was what was bothering me. They don't add up to 100. No, no, I do. I know...
They add up, I believe, to 101?
101. You can't question my math. They add up to 101, and some add up to 99. That was why I was wondering.
And that would be rounding...
Needed to know that, because they said it was, so...
Can we have one conversation at a time?
That's what I was going to ask.
Go ahead.
We rounded the number to the nearest whole number, so, to avoid decimal places. So, yes, that's possible. That may happen.
That's what I was trying. I knew there was a question there somewhere. And just last one, through the chair, Mrs. Lefort, I think you, and forgive me if I'm asking you to repeat yourself, you had said something that it's not standard at this point for the teachers to be, I guess, calibrated on the stats of these tests. Is that what you were saying earlier?
So, what I said was, the state tests are not going to be part of the SLOs or IAGDs, or specifically the IAGDs for a teacher's evaluation plan. That is per the state guidelines. State tests have not been used in teachers' IAGDs on evaluation since we began. Beginning, it was because of the transition from CMT to SPA. Now, with the federal ESSA Act, Every Student Succeeds Act, there's question marks about including standardized tests on teacher evaluation. So, the state of Connecticut has omitted the use of state testing data on teacher evaluation plans.
Omitted?
Correct. So, they're not using state data. They will use localized standardized testing where it exists. Where standardized assessment does not exist in a grade level or subject area, then two non-standardized forms of data would be used.
And how would that affect, or it may not, I think, just following up on Mrs. Lou McCormick, the principals or the headmasters of the schools? Will these stats be looked at and determine their success?
Not the state test data. That is not going to be used in evaluation plans.
Even for the senior, you know, the principals or the heads?
Was that also a state, is that a state mandate for that as well? So, it's for nobody? Nobody shall be...
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
One question and then a comment. In your, in the memo that you sent us, and on the backside questions for further study, the final question on the page was, how do we allocate resources to support these needs? And obviously, that's a tremendous question. Thank you, Mr. Cummings, for the reminder that that also involves time as a resource if we're looking at elementary school schedules. And, you know, for high school, whether it's extra support, you know, whether it's the minis or what have you, and then also the budget impact. And so, I'll sort of piggyback on Mrs. Lou McCormick's question of, do you think, at least for that question in particular, as we wait for all of this to come in, that that's something we'll be ready to address as we head into the budget? I mean, obviously, for staff here, I believe that's going to be right after Thanksgiving. So, is that something that you see being able to factor in at that point?
I believe our plans are to do what we did the last two years, which was come to you in the November board meeting with some recommendations for initiatives, and certainly would be based on our district improvement plan, which includes this data, where we see areas that we need to address that would include implications for budget.
And then a follow-up comment, that I did want to thank the staff for the extremely thorough list of questions for further study, which the staff is already working on. And I thought for the, well, obviously, a reminder to the board, interest of the public in terms of what the staff is already knowing that they need to work on. And without prompting, I just would like to read a couple of the questions. How does student performance on the standards? So, these are questions given to the board in this memo that the staff is already working on and aware of, needs to be addressed. How does student performance on the standards reflect the implementation of the current curriculum? Where is there close alignment, and what are the prioritized areas for improvement? What specific actions did we take in the past school year that had an impact on student performance? How could those actions be replicated? What actions had little or no impact? Can those be modified for success? And what classrooms, grades, and schools are the greatest successes occurring, and what conditions are potentially creating that success? And once identified, how do we work to disseminate best practices in instruction, assessment, and support to areas of greater need? I won't read the rest of them, but I just say, to me, this was a very thorough list, and I appreciate the thought that went into this, appreciate the information to the board, and that we know that these are the areas you're already looking at. So, thank you.
And I'll only make one comment, and that is that we have adopted a district improvement plan. And I think all of these assessments, I was glad to hear you say, are primarily so that teachers can do a better job of teaching individual students, but that the district is also using them to assess our overall work. And we have chosen the assessments, student performance indicators, that we're going to measure through the district improvement plan. And I think this data should stay focused on the district improvement plan, so that we can make changes in it as may be required. So, thank you for the presentation, answering the questions, and the work that you always do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, excuse me.
I have a question for the chair, actually.
For the chair?
Yes. So, my question is regarding the district improvement plan and the various benchmarks that we had within them, this kind of, I was reminded by one of the comments that Ms. Pitko made, which is, inside there, I recall us discussing whether a lot of the targets would be absolute, like 80% of kids shall be at or above proficient, versus we would like to see each child see 5% improvement, or 10%. So, as opposed to having like a growth target, we had an absolute number target. So, we'd like, instead of saying we'd like to see 10% growth in every school, we said we'd like to see 83 kids across the district. So, I'm just wondering, are we going to revisit that in November when we discuss the district improvement plan again? Should we talk about it in advance of that? How do you suggest, actually, if we wanted to review, how we've laid out those targets for future?
It's my understanding that the board, when we adopted the district improvement plan, said that let's take a look at it every year, but that let's wait for two years' worth of implementation, and take a serious look after two years, quote, "in the third year", to see if there are any specific changes that should be made in the district improvement plan. And so, I think that's where we are at the moment as a board, that we are, this is the first year, not the assessment report, but we will get a report at some point on the overall district improvement plan. And then we'll discuss it after a second year, with the idea of, do we make any changes? Certainly, if the staff find that there is a change that needs to be made just after the first year that makes sense, they'll bring it to our attention, I'm sure. Now, putting that aside for the moment, I think our discussion with the incoming superintendent is also that they'll take a look at the district improvement plan, as all CEOs do, and say, where is the board heading, and do they have any ideas that they would want to bring forward after they've had a chance, after Dr. Jones has had a chance to study it? So, it may be that, as a result of the new superintendent here, that some changes may be proposed come spring, after she's had a chance to find her way to the various schools, get through the budget process, and then make comments on where the district is heading under her leadership. So, we may be doing it earlier than we originally projected, but at the moment, the plan was to look at this each year and make any real changes after the second year.
I understand. I just wanted to know if there's flexibility to advance it if we need it to.
There's flexibility. I think if the staff specifically brings something forward that says, we need to change this, clearly, and anytime you get a new CEO, in our case, named superintendent, we always give the new superintendent opportunity to weigh in.
Mr. Chairman, just on that point, if I might, your plan does require on the first October meeting that we provide you with an update, simply presenting the data that we've gathered since the plan was initially adopted last year, and we'll be prepared to do that at your October 4 meeting.
Yes. Thank you. Now, for the couple of board members that arrived after we started, please don't think that we still have C, D, E, F, and G remaining. We went through those items and delayed the assessment, so that board members that came would be able to be part of that. So, now we are on item 3I, Committee and Liaison Reports. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
I apologize. And I did have one question on the superintendent's report, but I got so caught up in the court appeal that I forgot to go back to number three. If it'd be all right with you, Mr. Chair, if I back up to the superintendent's report, and that was regarding the capital planning workshop, and obviously, that it was held. I was not able to watch the whole meeting, but I was curious about what your impressions were from the meeting in terms of plans, you know, anything of immediate interest that the board should be aware of regarding the mood, the temperament, the, you know, the very specific plans, obviously. Now, Sherman was being discussed, and I was just curious about your impressions.
I'll give my own, and I'll ask Dr. Tracy if he wants to guess on the temperament after the first meeting he's had with the Board of Finance. One clear thing is that the town has always wanted to space out the capital projects to keep principal and interest under 10%. Some would say, once we achieve that goal, let's go for nine, let's go for eight. You know, they want to deleverage, lower the debt load of this town. The projections over the next 10 years accomplishes that. The highest they get is about 9.2. I don't remember the exact number, and the lowest they get is about 7.0. So, the projects that we have proposed, and the projects the town have proposed, have kept them within that overall policy. We have updated, as you know, when we sent to you the updated capital plan in August. It showed certain projects being moved around to recognize changing information, to recognize the decision of the RTM to separate the Holland Hill project from a large approved project to first a million, 240, and then a second. So, once we made that change, the staff submitted an updated capital plan that said, now that that has been separated, perhaps that would allow us to move the Sherman project, the third phase of the Sherman project, up a year or two. Forget the exact number. I will say that a couple of the Board of Finance members echoed support for making sure that we keep Sherman on track. And so, in my mind, that was good news. There wasn't any project that a finance board member said, well, where did this come from and why that? And so, at the moment, we don't have to make any changes from our updated capital finance report, capital report, based on last night's meeting. There is always concern about too many projects coming forward at the same time for review and approval by the town bodies. They just, they collect, and that makes people nervous, whether we can get them all through. So, whether we can stick to the exact schedule we have there or not is yet to be determined. I thought it was a good meeting. I thought we had good discussion. So, that would be my impressions. Dr. Tracy?
I think we were at the same meeting. And, no, I would characterize it as productive. There were some good questions, but as the chairman said, no particular project jumped out and attracted a lot of attention. The board did take notice of a couple of significant projects that had been moved earlier in the calendar, and I think they appreciated, you know, our statement that, as they integrate our work with the work of the town, that we stand ready to make adjustments if needed, to keep below that 10% cap that the chairman indicated. And I also want to take the opportunity to thank Tom Cullen for actually all the work that he and Sal have done to make all the information available in an accurate and understandable form. I thought it was a good meeting.
And they repeated the statement that the format in which we present the booklet, our capital projects, and some of the formats for reports that we created, and now they have adopted, we got compliments again from the Board of Finance for the clarity that those reports provide. I should remind, I don't need to remind the board, but I should remind everybody that simply because we've put a project on the schedule at a certain amount in a certain year, is no guarantee that that project will occur at that dollar amount in that particular year, because this is a planning document. And until this board adopts ed specs to move a project forward, or puts it in a budget, and until the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and RTM approve a project, the project is a plan, not a guarantee.
Thank you.
We also, I should add, we had the opportunity to listen to several of the town departments presenting their projects. I now know more about fire department equipment and tide gates than I ever thought I would learn.
So, please, listen to the whole tape, because then you'll also know about tide gates.
There's 12 of them, and some of them need to be replaced. That's what I got.
So, I think you were right on target, because really, you were asking about the committee and liaison reports from the Board of Finance. So, you weren't going backwards. You were right on schedule. Any other comments from board members on committee and liaison reports? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, just to let the board know, you'll be getting in your packet the minutes from the Ludlow High School Building Committee, which met last week. But now that the funding was approved by all the town bodies in June, that project, the windows, are moving forward. They are making windows, and they will be stored, and then they will be installed next summer. So, at least that's in the pipeline. And then Osborne Hills Building Committee is meeting next week. We didn't meet this past week. I can't even remember. They've been moved around so much. But the building committee is meeting next week for Osborne Hill, so perhaps we might start to have some insights as to the sake of the connector. But I will pass along those minutes when they are available.
So, for some of you parents who knew that this windows project was being discussed when your children were freshmen, and now that they have graduated from college and are working, please send them an email saying, the windows are coming. Any other committee of liaison reports? Any other committee of liaison reports? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
First, if I could follow up with a question to Mrs. Gerber. Osborne Hill, is the rebidding is what they are waiting on, or that has yet to happen?
It's, they don't have the numbers next week, but it is in the process, I believe. Yeah, they're going out for the third bid, so I think, again, the numbers are coming October, November. And so, to be honest with you, I'm not quite sure what next week's meeting is for, but I will go to it, and I will, if anything interesting happens, I'll share it with the board.
This is the connector corridor. And this, you may remember, is not something that was in our ed specs. It was, if the building committee could accomplish it, would be nice, but the RTM members felt strongly about this aspect of the Osborne Hill project, and allocated additional funding to allow for it. And so, that piece of the... And so that piece of the project is still moving forward because of the reasons I just stated.
And then, follow up. And then, just regarding Policy Committee, just a reminder to board members, if you could please bring in what are quickly now going to be the very much outdated policy manuals, so that you can be working off of the online copy, which, and I believe the numbers be completely recodified any moment now.
When we left the office today, we're hoping that they will be uploaded to the website beginning tomorrow.
And for anyone who could not hear Mrs. Parks' report, that, what you've all been on the edge of your seats for, that the numbers will be uploaded, completely recodified, zeros to 9,000 by tomorrow, our hope. So again, as of that moment, any number you're looking at in your paper manual, which you are welcome to go and reprint, Mr. Patton. Once again, the other manual is outdated, and we appreciate it being brought in.
Mr. Patton, you have a question?
We're delivering them, too. Mine's right there. I brought mine. You were always ahead.
And we're not gonna break the shredder?
Okay. So, let me comment on the Holland Hill Building Committee. They, the committee has not yet discussed numbers related to the schemes that they have. Clearly, a concern that is out there is that our original plan was to accomplish the additional classrooms and the immediate needed upgrades, core upgrades to the school. The building committee's design has quite a bit more square feet in it than we were contemplating, because they are looking to upgrade other sections of the building that were not in our plan. The classrooms are a little bit bigger, just the design is bigger. So everybody is anxiously awaiting where that project will end up in terms of an early estimate. As I'm sure you took note in the August capital project budget, we did add additional money for that project in recognition that we thought that they were heading in a certain, heading in a direction where the project might cost more money, based on the square feet, whether we've allowed enough or not, is anybody's guess. But that probably will be known maybe in another month or six weeks. Any other committee and liaison reports? Any other committee? Hearing none. Open board comment? Any board members wish to make a comment? Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli?
Just one quick, and I'll probably repeat this a couple of times. My personal plug out there, for anyone who is aware of infant Odyssey of the Mind interest in their schools, that I'd love to hear from you. We've actually heard from a number of, I've heard from a number of schools that are interested in that, and that I would love to help those schools get it off the ground.
Thank you. Any other board comment? Mr. Patton?
I just came from the Woods Open House, and I guess fellow board members will be glad to hear the few teachers I talked to in the math and word language departments. They are extremely happy with the textbooks that we have chosen over the last year or so for those improved programs. And especially math, they couldn't be more thrilled with how that's working out. And so, we should pat ourselves on the back, I guess, for making the right decision.
Other comments? Ms. Carnell?
Who brought the desserts? It's the first time the board's been.
At last night's meet and greet for the new superintendent, Whitson's made sure that we had enough for everybody, and so we had some left over, so it's brought tonight.
Dr. Jones, thank you very much. We've never even had water on the table.
So let me make, if there's not, nobody else, a couple of comments. As you know, the board has wanted to have a town hall meeting. I have, to my second updated list, that kind of clearly shows there's no date that works for everybody. And I've asked if you could update me to make sure that if I pick a date that has the least number of board members absent, that I can do it that way. I've only heard from one person, well, two, if you count myself. So, I cannot pick a date, unless you just want me to pick a date that is good for me, and if you can get here, you can get here. I'd rather pick a date that I know from everybody where you stand. You may think, well, there's no changes, so I don't need to tell Phil. Please tell me that, no, you've got me down accurately, no changes, so that I know that you've done that. So that's where we are in the town hall meeting. You may have noticed last year, actually, I know one board member, but I won't mention Jennifer's name, noticed that over the last couple of years, we've kind of slowly shifted from all of the meetings are always on the second and fourth Tuesday, to some of the meetings are on the first and third Tuesday. Hmm?
That step is something she would figure out.
You did ask me privately.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
I did, too.
Okay. For good and just reasons, I'm sure that they got moved to accommodate a holiday or something. But that created a lot of conflicts with the Board of Finance meeting schedule, where they expected members of the Board of Ed and the superintendent to be at their meeting, and of course, we expected to be at our meeting. So Tom Flynn and I have matched meeting dates projected for 2007. By going back to the second and fourth, 2017, by going back to the second and fourth meetings, months, weeks for the meetings, we solved all but three of the dates. One is during the budget cycle, where they essentially meet virtually every day for a couple of weeks. So there's gonna be a conflict there. And so that's just something that both bodies have to deal with. And then the other two is that they actually scheduled a separate meeting to do a quarterly review at the end of the year. So there are two dates, one in September and one date in November, that we're discussing to see how to solve that problem. So if you see this updated schedule when it comes out later on, I'm just giving you a heads up to start thinking of second and fourth Tuesday, rather than calendaring, well, when did we meet last time? And I'll just do the same calendar. And you'll probably be pretty safe. So that's where we are with that. And I remind you that in October is when we allow time on the, I think, second regular meeting, for board members to make any comments that they wish to make, that the staff can take into consideration as they put the budget together. Probably tying them into, so what of the district improvement initiatives will be budgeted to accomplish in the 1718 year that you have an interest in, might be a good way to structure your comments. But of course, you're welcome to make whatever comments on whatever budget ideas that you might have, and so please be ready for that. And that's it for me. With no further comment, we're down to item number four, adjournment. Recommended motion that this special meeting of the Board of Education adjourn. Ms. Pitco standing by, Mrs. Maxon, Mrs. Gerber. Mrs. Gerber, all in favor, please raise your hand.
I want to stay longer.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much.